What's up everybody? This is the poker coaching study session and today we're going to be looking at barreling the turn. So we start from a scenario for forty big blind button versus big blind. We see that the flop small with the two big blind bet. The big blind calls, we see a turn on the the turn big bang is gonna check and we're gonna be on this spot for a little while. So let's go. Do you guys think it's a good turn to barrel?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, you're going huge here.
Yeah.
Going eight point four or twelve point six.
Should we go that big without a speed? I thought maybe.
Well, you picked up the diamonds, so.
Alright, question number one into bet card, right? We all agree?
Oh, a hundred percent.
Generally, our range is gonna bet pretty hard and polarize pretty hard.
So question two, what size?
Eight and a half or twelve and a half.
Why you wanna go so big?
Well, you got ten high, you picked up probably one of the best cards in your barreling range. And um, yeah, you gotta get some folds here and you got plenty of clean rivers.
You wanna press.
Also, he didn't check raise you on the flop, which is going to limit his king X and flush draws a little bit. So it's just gonna tilt him more towards like a medium strength holding here.
I like it. Most of our range also is just not going smallish or mediumish. This is a, this is a big bet kinda spot. And this is a big bet kinda hand.
Let's see.
Twelve and a half.
Eh. Would I've made a mistake betting anything else?
Yeah, I think if you go smaller, you're just kinda giving his seven X kind of a uh, an out, you know, like they can realize equity a little bit easier.
Is it twelve geometric?
Twelve and a half sets up a river show.
That's, that's the other thing. Yeah, twelve and a half is fairly geometric here.
And this is my, my number one rule from turn barreling since I learned poker was uh, no draws got there on the turn, top pair is still top pair. Uh, that's a, that's a hyper polarized spot.
The turn was the nine, right?
Yep, even more importantly, it's the nine of diamonds. Like if you look at the split, I think the diamonds is gonna prefer just because we have a diamond. As uh, we had ten eight. So you see ten eight of diamonds is kinda going bonkers. I mean, it's, it's kind of all over the place, really. You can't deduce too much from it.
Well, no, I think I have an idea. If you look at this queen jack here, you need a spade. Kind of, right? And like you pick up the gut shot with it, queen ten, you need a spade with it. So it's kind of the spade, right? It's a good driving factor. The ace of spades is pretty good. Uh, okay, the wheels are ace three off with the spade. Hmm, anyone call the double barreling is ace three here. Okay, so the pattern is like lower aces, get better aces to fold, I guess.
Yeah, I'm not doing that. And that's something I was getting wrong when I was studying this spot today. You need to, I need to find a lot more barrels in some turn spots.
Good start folding sevens too, so.
Yeah, okay, let's, let's continue. Start to find another spot.
Chat say cooler. Uh, this is not a barrel spot, I don't think.
Yeah.
Looks like a check.
Actually, this barrel quite a bit.
Wow.
Checking is very reasonable. I mean, you don't have to go crazy here.
Reasonable, but why would you bet their second pair, your degraded second pair here?
I think it's just the seven is kind of concluded to be a brick. It's a rainbow seven.
Oh, no, I, oh, no, it's not even, I was gonna say it's a key card, but it's a key card for him, not for us.
Yeah, but he's gonna raise some of his seven X, check raise some of them, so he doesn't have them all.
So that's true after, after, cause we've bet lots of like air type hands with the seven and them on the flop. He doesn't really like.
I think it goes back to what you were saying, Tim, like uh, the nuts that were the nuts on the flop are still pretty much the nuts on the turn. So like, you know, we got aces, we got kings, we got strong queen X. We're just gonna be blasting here sometimes.
Yeah, but I check it. Check is still the preferred answer.
Fifty fifty. I think so. I think this one's basically uh, basically board coverage, cause all our other five X is checking, so I think we just.
This was something I also had to, I had to learn uh, Joey was um, why it's the preferred answer here. Um, you're playing versus a perfect opponent. Do you think it's still the perfect answer if they're over folding? Or what do you, how do you think that affects the EV of the situation?
Yeah, you're correct. If they're over folding, then.
Right, so it probably becomes a more profitable barrel, even though it kinda breaks the cardinal rule of like marginal made value.
So yeah, I thought the seven was not so good for us.
It's just a rainbow seven. It doesn't really affect his continue range, you know?
I thought it did because it says seven smashes him and misses us a lot.
I mean, even if he makes a pair of sevens, it's still not beating like the range we're representing, so it's still kinda shitty to have to call.
So like, if you look at his calling range, what seven X does he really continue with here? That's not like a two pair.
Bingo.
So like, I, I don't think it smashes his seven X is, is what I'm saying. Our, 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 our flop bet kind of takes care of that. He doesn't have seven, seven because he's raising it pre-flop.
And we do.
We do. He will have some A seven here. If he didn't three bet it pre-flop.
Alright. Okay. Oh, that's easy.
Um, see man, I, I go back and forth on these spots because I have a fairly confident bluff catch card here, but we do have the spade, so it kinda makes me wanna barrel sometimes.
That's small thirty.
Oh, wait, it's two pair. I'm sorry. I missed the two pair aspect of it. I think we still just barrel. It is easy.
I think because we have the spade, we can size down a little bit. What's the guess on the sizing? What kinda size?
I think it's just thirty-three.
Yeesh, I'm going big, man. I'm going big.
It's not that small.
He's got king ten, he's got jack ten, he's got queen jack, he's got like a ton of combos he can continue with here.
I wanna go. We have ace, king, aces, kings, jacks, king, a bunch of two pairs like.
And you know, it's like if he has two pair here, we're just cooling a lot of his two pairs. He doesn't have ace, king, he shouldn't have ace, jack very much. We're blocking ace.
I have to think about our range, right? Well, cause we have a bunch of bluff that wanna sneak in.
Yeah.
Well, I'm still wanna sneak in.
So.
Queen X, ten X.
Sure with sizing.
I'll also the question, the question is, on a blank turn, do you wanna get all in? Or I made a, a blank river?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No.
I'm going three streets with this hand.
If I could, I would, but I don't think it's gonna be possible.
Cause if we wanna, if we wanna play for all in, it's gonna be twelve point six.
Yeah, dude, I liked, I like eight point four, twelve point six. And like if you put the seven of clubs out there, if you put like the seven of clubs, for instance, we're definitely just going to be going bananas on the river with this combo.
I'm gonna play the rest of the hand, turn and river, right?
Yeah.
Is this a double? Sure.
I feel like this is a two street hand. The eight is.
We bet small, do you downsize?
I'm kinda liking camp five point five and eight point four.
He's gonna chuck a decent amount forty.
I think it will check some Ken. I think it will check some. It went rainbow is the only reason I kinda wanna keep barreling some.
I haven't got.
I think it's more bigger. I think again that we're not worried about any draws having gotten there. He doesn't really make a notable amount of two pairs here.
Yeah, it might go bigger. I'm just thinking like, we got a two street. I don't think I wanna go that big. I might be missing value though.
I think I'm like five.
It goes a lot of checking.
Checking, right? Let's, let's look at how we structure the aces.
But your best.
Probably just, you probably need a little bit better, like.
Yeah, but.
There's nine plus. The one, it's like.
It's literally the worst. Yes.
Although you can see it starts to slow down at a seven, basically, like ace eight is hundred percent, ace seven slows down a little bit.
The six is bad here for some reasons, cause look at the opposite ones, how, how symmetrical this is. Yeah. So the six is bad. Why is the six so bad?
Well, probably because the nature. On, on the flop, like ace, jack, ace, queen, ace, king are going to check raise, but ace nine, ace eight and ace seven may just call.
I mean, if you look at the nature of like what he's doing pre-flop, he's raising his best and his middling ace X as a bluff. And the wheel aces get better aces to fold. I think this is just like the stone bottom combo. Like, I think you wanna use the wheel aces to target hands like this for folds, put a lot of pressure on them.
This is like our worst.
Yeah, this is the one in the middle.
Yeah, so it's like, it's a little worse than the bluffs. So if you go check, check, I think we can go for another street here. It's too nitty just to get one street with this hand. And we're, I mean, we're blocking the bottom, the bottom.
Six, check. Can you bet six?
Six feels okay.
I think you could even go bigger. I think you'd probably go eight and a half or six, something like that.
I don't know if I would get.
A river, yeah, right.
I wouldn't have found the eight and a half on the river with this hand.
I think it's just because we played check turn.
Yeah, yeah, and he checked, he checked back, so.
This feels like a eight and a half to me.
Yeah.
Even smaller, you can go.
Small because it's monotone. It's the first time that the five point five is used on monotone boards. So we can guess probably pair boards is gonna go like that as well.
Yeah, yeah.
Perhaps, uh, I think I kinda wanna play check now, man. Do we go for value here?
The solver goes for value. It's a little bit dicey in real life, but it's all.
No, 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 no. There's an ace and a jack and a ten here. What does he have? The king and the or the queen? If he has it, here's fifteen big blacks. Oh.
Check. Alright, honestly, Louis, you had sold me, man.
Maybe I'm going to ten.
Yeah, apparently. And like, look at the EV, it expects us to win a lot, but it doesn't think that we're gonna get called by much worse.
Four percent, it's not happy at all.
Me, that, that uh, that used car, man, I thought it had a Ferrari engine. Turns out it needed a new transmission.
It, you know, man, sometimes they make a Mazda look like a Ferrari.
Hmm.
That's what I bought.
Yep, that's what I bought.
You know? How didn't we get to the river on this without seeing the turn?
Uh, that's a good question. I think he accidentally locked it on the turn for the river action here. It looks like we took a polar line on the turn, like we went eight and a half.
Let's do it again. Let's do it again. Change rules. There we go. I don't know why, but here we are.
You know?
Well, we all know the answer, so.
Well, we know what the solver did. We don't know if it's like the only answer. I am debating here. I think in game.
What's drawing to the note, right? You know, with the worst spade.
I think we can probably find one more barrel.
Value bet against worse spade, but I would never find eight here.
Why would? Yeah, actually, the monotone board before we bet fifty-five.
Well, we also didn't have the nut, nut flush blocker and the straight blocker.
So we have the, on monotone board, like you're cautious, but then until you have the nut draw.
Yeah, I think that makes some sense.
Okay.
And now like if he calls, it's an easy check back here, I think. I, I think we got two streets. We're good.
Are we good?
That's fine, man. We lose to a trashy ace. It's okay. Could have been worse.
Yeah, we're good. You're locked somewhere.
Yeah, you're locked for the river action.
You gotta bluff this.
I'm kinda with you, Ken. Again, this is like, I'm, I'm all in here. It's actually, the answer is probably like twenty-two, I think, but I'm all in, I think.
That's small on the flop.
All in is pretty nice.
And then this, you guys wanna dump?
Yeah, you got pretty good combo, man. You're blocking the straight, you're blocking the flush. You get better, you get better combos to fold. Like it checks a bunch of boxes for a good bluff.
Do you get a better king to fold?
I think like fifteen's enough to.
Ace high, weak pairs, you get eight X to fold, five X.
Ace high, probably fold at the turn. We polarize that turn already.
You get.
Ace high, ace of spades with a ten. Yeah, eight X, five X.
You only have thirty-seven big blinds here to try to get in full ace high.
I think.
Okay, no.
I think.
If we bet big, we could get him to pull fold pairs, like five, oh yeah, fives and threes. We're not just targeting aces.
Okay, well, the thing is here, we're in the middle of that deck. Like if we had like a, a worse part of that deck, sure, but this is a little bit high, right? We're, we're in here with like seven.
So I think we got good, really good blockers and I think fifteen's enough to get like pocket, like a pair of fives, pair of eight, ace high, pair of threes, whatever, if they're still in there somehow with the redraw, like I think that's just enough to get.
You know.
Okay, you guys wanna go? My guess that we would go king seven off, which would be that bottom of the range with the king spade.
Dude, king seven is kind of like a trash blocker though. The seven's kind of a trash blocker.
Yep.
We have the ten of spades here, like.
So you guys wanna draw in here? Is there any?
Yes.
I'm gonna save some chips, play live longer.
Dude, I'm not checking here. I'm definitely bluffing here. I'm just torn between twenty-two.
What size are you going for value if you hit somehow you have like ace of spades, queen here? What size are you betting?
Big twenty-two or all in?
You're still gonna go twenty-two?
What are you gonna do? You wanna go smaller or something?
Yeah, fifteen for sure. I'm with Ken. If I hang out, I can, ace queen with one spade blocker, the highest we can go is fifteen.
Well, we're blocking the flush, so we should bet as if we had the flush. How much would you bet with the flush?
Yeah.
I just don't see too much fifteen here. I'm thinking like, I'm gonna be more polar, I think.
I'm going all in with the flash, so we're gonna bluff, I mean, might as well.
Let's go.
Thank you. I'm glad you had the convictions there, Tim. Like I was starting to wane a little bit, but.
No, I, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I have no doubts about the stand, man.
Alright, you kept me strong.
See, I prefer the king seven here. King ten is the last of the thing, right? Look at this thing.
It was ninety-eight percent frequency.
Look at my king seven, doing it more than your king ten. Now.
Our combo with the ten, our combo with the ten of spades wants to shove.
Yeah.
That, that, that is what we were saying. It's not the king ten, it's the ten of spades that made it a show.
And also like, if you look at the global frequencies of how often we arrive here with a combo like that, it, it's not even close, right? King ten's gonna be here more than king seven.
So I wanna understand it better, cause I'm not finding enough gems here. You guys got the ten of spade, you go wild on this?
You block the straight, you block the flush.
You block the flush.
So combos to fold, like those are the three things right there. I don't know like what else we're looking for. If you can check those three boxes, it's probably a good bluff.
And when, and when you block the flush, as a bluff, you would use the same sizing as you would as if, if you had the flush.
And let's see what he's folding. So like, you're getting all of his jack X, all jack X out of there.
Bunch of eight X.
You're getting queen X out of there, queen kings out of there, like.
You're getting, you're getting some threes out, you're getting fives out, you're even getting, you're even getting some eights out.
He's folding a pair of queens, king, queen.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
Supposedly.
In green, no spade?
Yeah.
Gotta be no spades, right?
Man, that's some heat. Like if I had king, queen, no spade and made it to this river, which is probably not happening very often.
Spade. King, queen with a spade, it's just like, ah.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not gonna station off. He can be after like, especially against our opponents after they bet big term, bet big river, like.
But six, five though, if you had that six, five.
So it goes back to like blockers, like six, five, you're unblocking all of the bluffs.
Five, four.
You got a reasonable blocker, even though the six is kind of irrelevant.
Six, five, five, four. These are good answers, it seems.
Well, I would be, yeah, I would be cautious with those, right?
Look, there is the blocking effect, like blocker score four, and then this here has blocker score four and five.
I never noticed that. Yeah, I never noticed that either.
Hi, Gail and I, Louis.
Hey, how are you?
Oh. Wait, wait, just a quick one. Uh, what, I mean, if you go for a smaller size river bluff, uh, would you not have all of those ace highs and, and everything but a queen or maybe some jacks do not fold? I mean, isn't a smaller size bet not achieving almost fifty, sixty percent of what all in tab is achieving?
Look at this here, there's no real small side. This is like money.
But the money in Texas Hold'em does not come from like half pot, half pot, half pot. It comes from building a super polarized range with like flushes and bluffs. Um, so like let him pay us all his chips when we have a flush and uh, let's really get him to think about folding a queen when we have a bluff.
Well, yeah, like this hand, like, like what he was saying, Ashwin, you don't really have small bets here, like this twenty-two big blinds, to be honest, to simplify your life, just get rid of that and throw it in and have two ranges here, have a check range. And then have an all-in range. Like you don't really need to split ranges too much here. Like I, I think it's splitting because like you're, you're saving a little bit um, with some of these lower EV combos when you get called.
Yep.
Like over the, over the long run, but I don't know, man. I, I think just jam it, make your life easy.
Alright.
Andrew Brokaw has this line that um, the name of the game is uh, no limit hold'em, not um, half pot limit hold'em.
Half pot hold'em.
So uh, it's something that's worth remembering.
Oh God, we're on the river again.
Oh, look, Louis, you gotta unlock whatever's left.
Yeah, well, seems like I don't have any control. Oh, we're on the river. It's true.
Yeah, you just, you just have to go back and click the turn.
Oh my.
Louis, would we ever lie to you, man? Would I lie to you?
I know. You probably.
Me?
Just kidding.
That would be the first to tell you.
I know.
If I lied.
I know, I know, I know. You'd lie, but then you'd say, oh, I lied. Alright, turn. Okay, it's.
I ne- now said it, play to river.
Can you do that?
Woo.
I think when you tried to send it play to river, you said it for.
Action.
Give it, give it a go, see if this works.
Okay, we're good. We don't touch anything.
I mean, we got our escape out here. I think you just played checks.
Checks, huh?
Yeah.
Nope.
Oh.
Okay, try again.
You find a, yeah, I'm never, I honestly, I'm never, never finding a, another barrel here.
When the flush comes in and you don't have a blocker.
This just seems like honestly, like the stone nuts, most unattractive bet here.
Um.
Yeah, I agree.
You have a nine, but it's a weak nine and the flush comes in. So I'm just thinking to myself like, oh, this is great. I can try to uh, you know, play rivers.
Yeah, that, this seems like the most marginal hand you can ever hold.
Yeah, like literally the stone nuts. But apparently it's not like.
I get it. I think I get it.
The range in general is just really kind of.
Well, if we turn an eight and nine or a ten, we're very happy.
I guess they're just kinda treating it like, you know, these cards are basically high frequency airballs, given the texture on the flop.
So already like we can see betting small on the turn, the yellow is not really a thing unless, unless it comes low. If it comes low, we have more of a bad small component. Otherwise, the turn is a six or higher, we're really like betting kind of thing. This is what, like this is almost fifty fifty or?
Yeah, that's about it. I think so.
Okay, and then this is like.
Seventy thirty, maybe at its peak.
Okay, so eight, nine, ten are pretty good for us. Like king's not even so good.
A king is actually uh, it's not that it's not good. I think it's just a more polarizing combo. Like look, it's the highest big bet frequency by far.
We're like, it's not even close. King turn, king turns you over that. Ah, okay, it's really the only one that does that, right?
It's the only one that's going bananas here.
So we reduce the betting frequency, but we pump up on, on the gas pedal.
What was the?
For whatever reason.
Uh, ace, five, deuce.
I was thinking about this and I feel like uh, he has to find some uh, some floats with like his top unpaired cards, like some king X and queen X. So he turns some pairs when a king rolls off.
Yeah, I feel like the uh, the Brazilians are a mile, a mile ahead of us on this one.
Alright, so back to the business. Why would we double barrel on a nine of spade?
I think the overriding component is the, the range.
Pretty good?
Yeah, I think that's, it's just overriding our actual like absolute hand strength.
So it's not a spade we bet it anyway. We don't care about the flushes here.
You know, I don't know the answer to that. Um, if you made it rainbow, like make it like a diamond or something, I would be kinda curious to see if we're still kind of betting as much or if it wants to bet more. So like globally, our frequency is seventy thirty. Alright, so now if we get like the nine of this, let's see.
Seventy thirty.
Alright, so we check a little bit more, but not really. It polarizes more. So the flush coming in on the turn pushes bet sizings down.
Yeah, it depolarizes.
It depolarizes a little bit and um, yeah, we just get to go, we get to get even further out of line here is what I'm seeing.
My prediction is when we bet this nine, we're getting a lot of protection and we got a bunch of like king, queen type hands to fold.
Yeah, and um, I think this also helps you realize equity some. Like when you bet the turn here and you get called, you can easily play check river, cause I don't know how big.
One thing I'm noticing right away is that on night, on the flush card, we actually bet small. We have a lot of small bets. Whereas on the rainbow turn, don't have any small bets.
Yeah, that's what, that's what we were saying.
And with the smaller bet, he's probably supposed to call down some fives and threes.
Alright, let's continue.
And yeah, pretty interesting. So we find our small five, five.
So yeah, we could small bet. Actually, you know what? Yeah, the flush comes, we're, we're still, okay, so it makes sense, makes sense actually.
Like if it's.
For us, we're supposed to bet it, but the flush comes in, so we're sizing down a little.
Almost like a monotone flop.
Yeah. Okay, he wants to dance.
Alright, I think it's very, very easy fold now.
What if you have the eight of spade?
Uh, indifference.
Yeah.
Actually, I'm wrong. It's indifference right there. If you have the eight of spades, I think it's just a call.
Yeah. Okay, just as a flush.
Um, king, king nine, he didn't raise. This feels like another one, maybe we could bet.
Yeah, I feel more confident betting this than the nine.
Like I, I feel like we're getting check raised by his king X. Um, we're blocking the straight. We can get value from nine X here.
It's a pair board.
Yeah, I, I think.
Five this time.
I agree. I think.
Yeah, yeah.
Our sizing.
That's true.
That's it.
But it, it checks some and then it bets some, okay, but you hit the right size.
Both pair boards and, and monotone bars when we double barrel, it's five, but on rainbow turns, it's like going bananas.
Right.
Very far, like that.
And we get ace high to fold. Alright, so this is a six turn. Um, really looking for an excuse to bet here.
That's small.
Nah, I, I definitely check this.
So like, my, my current iteration of my game, I play this as a check. But I, after looking at what we just looked at, um, it's got some similar characteristics. Like we were looking at nine, eight, seven, high frequency, so the six is gonna pass some of that.
But I, I did look at the other, like the bottom pair, like the fives and threes from that previous board and they were checking more than betting.
Ah, okay. Yeah, I think this is pretty different, cause a, a pretty obvious draw is coming in.
Oh, yeah, I wanted to, I wanted to go three, three here. I wanted to go three, three here.
Yeah, the flush complete, so it's often gonna use small sides.
We get nines to fold, we get eights to fold. Uh, we can put a lot of his like.
Hang on, nine is not folding. Eight probably, but we get value from a single spade in his end.
Am I having a stroke?
If you go five, five here, let's see what he's actually folding. He's probably not folding nine. In game, though, you might be getting foot nine X to fold sometimes. It's kind of what I was thinking. And like uh so we we need to be on the turn. We're on the river here, it looks like.
Oh, turn six, big bar check button, no.
Uh, yeah, so we want to bet five, five, not all in. Or am I missing something here? What am I screwing up?
And six, suited.
Right, so we bet and we want to look at his response. So we bet.
Yeah, you ask.
Yes, we bet five, five. I just wanted to look at.
What he has to fold.
Right, so we got some jack nine there folding, some queen nine, some king nine folding. Yeah, he's folding nines.
Yes, uh, yeah. Yeah, so we get some nines off. He calls like he had no luck, just check.
I kind of want to show it down, I think. Okay, what is he floating that hand for? We didn't get check raised on the flop. So I kind of want to take another stab at it, I think.
Yeah, what size do you want to go for?
The paired board's gonna size it down one or two.
Yeah.
I'm thinking eight point four and five, five are gonna be where it's mixing.
It's very clear, okay, on pair boards, we need one a double barrel by five and on monotone boards as well. Ah, look at this, it's not.
Five, five times two.
J K.
Look at that, man. I'm not finding, I'm not finding the twelve and a half here. I think it's interesting, though, like I'm I'm probably under polarizing turns quite a bit by looking at this.
Do we go for it now? Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I I I don't think there's a question. I think you just go for it here. And he got us. Good game. Good game. Um, the four is not a great card. It's a double flush draw. I think we um probably give up pretty hard here.
Louis doesn't like, Louis doesn't like to give up.
Oh, I none of us do.
This is, no, 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 we're not gonna give up.
You want to barrel this?
Well, we have a five in our hand, okay, and then we're, we can still put spades and hearts in the pickle. And then if we think about our ranges, it's the bottom of our range.
Having a five is bad.
I know it's not easy, but you're gonna be alright.
The bottom of our range at all. We have six, five, seven, five, and we have all kinds of.
Yeah, and king five has three outs that might win.
I'm kind of with Tim on this one, man.
And I really think that, I mean, when we polarize this turn, our bluffs are gonna have a lot of spades and hearts in them. And uh stuff with straight interactivity.
Okay, do you think it would be better with the king of hearts or the king of spade?
Definitely.
Maybe, we, I think we need even more.
I want more, though. I don't, I don't want to just go bonkers.
Yeah.
So if you look at the range, I don't think the O C ones are getting pulled from here.
I don't really want to put another chip in unless a king hits the river with this hand.
What were GB's three justifications for all in flush, block hands, straight? Okay, uh.
Well, you guys are right. I mean, Tim was right. We need the flush, flush card, this spade or heart to do that. But it's a thing, right? With the heart or a spade, you're at the bottom of your range.
Oh, yeah, yeah, heart or spade, I would have bet.
Uh I thought the upper deck, the four was good enough, but not so much.
I think at that point, take uh take two upper dinglers, take hands like six five.
Okay, we check. Oh, one big line. Hmm, I don't know. King of heart, we would do something. The way we're great, king of heart, we.
King, king of hearts, I would love to shove this back to his face.
Maybe not shove, but like a ten big line raise.
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness. Hello? What is this?
You know what? I think his small bet.
Yeah, it's one big blind, man. King has gonna win here sometimes.
Oh, yeah, I wouldn't worry too much about one big blind.
It's a blocker bet. If he's, if he's betting one, one big blind with the flush, he's just trying to level you.
Okay, king of hearts. Okay, we raised sixteen. King of hearts. Alright, that's good enough for me.
Sixteen. That's pretty savage.
Yeah.
G T O scored twenty.
Not too happy with this. That's good.
All right, for somebody who doesn't speak French, what's move they could mean?
Bad move. I wonder if that's blunder for for us. Oh, we're gonna, we're gonna barrel. This is a triple.
What size, what?
Yeah, no jaws came in.
Oh, this one's easy, man. We got the nuts. Like you just barrel it in.
Yeah, you just put your chip in the pot. Cooler two pair. Life is good.
Uh, I think this is a barrel.
I agree.
I like this because the king is better for us than it is for him. We have a spade. We still have the straight equity. We get pl- plenty of better hands to fold.
Yep.
So like I was saying, those three things we were talking about, gets better hands to fold, you got pretty premium blockers. And little in a showdown, I think is what I was saying.
Yep.
So what sizing? Eight or twelve?
Well, we really want those here. We really want folds here because we have very thin equity. So I think if you're gonna bet, you gotta go kind of kind of grande here.
Kind of grande, so eight?
Eight or twelve, man.
You wanna?
I think we're all, I think we're all in the eight or twelve, or at least I'm in the eight or twelve.
We saw it a couple of uh sims ago that the king turn was not so good.
Yeah, maybe that's what it is.
All our turn, but it's not like we polarize. We don't really like.
You're, you're right. So you.
Not so much.
I guess there's a thing where it's a whole nother straight draw opens up higher up the board. So maybe uh if you look at our entire range strategy, do we have like, are we going crazy with some of the queen, jack, queen, ten kind of stuff?
Well, I take the king on the other board had an ace on the flop.
Yeah, yep, that's what's going on. We're going crazy. So, yeah, we have a whole nother straight draw that opened up. So we use the top one and then we check back this one, try to realize down here.
Yeah, I definitely discounted that. You're right, Tim. We have way better hands to bluff here because of that additional straight draw that opened up. So we just don't need to pull from this.
You see that a lot, like similarly on the flop when there's like, you know, two, you know, if the flop is, let's say, king, nine, five.
Now, I don't, I don't know if we.
Too many. You gotta, you gotta go for it, I think, Louis.
Yeah, I I think so, too.
I don't know if you go that big. It may be like, where do we go on the turn? We went eight and a half. I don't think you go all in. I think you may. You may see like fifteen or twenty-two here or check. Nah, not even that big.
What happened? How did it?
He was just looking at the turn action.
That's a low frequency uh line we took, but still a bit of a thing. So you guys want to dump?
No, no, no. We, we didn't bet to to shove on the turn. If, if we, if we had a king on the turn, we would have bet twelve on the turn.
Not the one, ah, maybe. Maybe, but now here we are.
And we, we would have set up a shove on the turn.
Yeah, I kind of want to go for this like middling size to target like his just complete airballs that break like. I don't know, he's gonna have some jack ten here, some queen ten.
I think it's not crazy. Oh, I think we can go smaller with our really crappy bluffs cuz like you're saying, Galen, anything, any folds we get are valuable to us. Whereas if we're bluffing a better hand, then we have to bet bigger to get even better hands to fold.
Yeah, I I don't think we need to go outlandishly polar here. Like if you're gonna split the the bluff size, I think this is going to go down the smaller sizing.
I want to check.
Yeah, I think it's, I think the solver is just not gonna want to give it up. But but yeah, it does. Look at that. It's like, don't do it.
Well, I don't know. If we bet half pot, he has to call seventy-five percent of his range.
Yeah, but solver's a fish, you know, he'll find those.
Oh, man, we just bet twice already and like he's not going anywhere. So what are we?
Honestly, like.
Lot of money is going with a bad hand.
I think it just doesn't want to compound mistakes here. Like it's borderline already on the turn, you know, like. It wanted to check and we still found a bet. And now it's like, you want to bet again? Is that really what you want to do? Okay, so we saw the same heuristic, right? So the flush kind of completes. Uh I think we can find another small bet, medium bet here. So five and a five are that?
Ah, yeah, five, five.
It does find another one, okay?
That's big here, polarize again.
Bigish, yeah, it does have a out there.
Most space.
And, you know, we get a better hand to fold.
Yeah.
I, I'm still not seeing where the difference is when you bet small or bet. Cuz it has been all over one of those three flush boards on the turn. Some are, some are small and some are large.
It depends on the value, right?
Yeah, I think it just kind of depends on like.
Like it, it's a rainbow turn, Joey, it's gonna be bonkers, no, no small size, but.
Right, now I'm talking about.
Is we're gonna mix. Everything is gonna mix.
This question was around like, how do you determine when you bet like three point three or eight point four on flush card turns?
Yeah, just value.
Yeah, and I think, I think it's a function of the absolute hand strength you have there. So like, you know, you're gonna, you're gonna split it there depending on like if you have showdown or not, or if you have a blocker or not.
We have a diamond here.
Yeah, um, I kind of want to bet this because we get a lot of better a sex to fold and we do have the diamond, I think may. I don't know, man. This may be a bit thin. It may just check this. I may be like, I may be just talking out here.
I would bet it.
I I don't hate betting here, um. It's a two street hand, okay? So it's like you're either playing bet, check, bet, or bet, bet, check. And I don't know if I'm going too crazy.
Or, or if we, if we bet small, we could buy the, buy a free river.
Yeah, it's mainly a check, but you can, yeah, um, I like that idea, Joey. I kind of think about hands that way too sometimes. Now we're just kind of, yeah, this is a miserable spot, right? Like, we played check and I think we got a good bluff catcher.
I don't think it's that miserable. We just snap it off and hope.
It's one point five X pot and we have an okay bluff catcher.
I have top there.
We do.
Alright, let's go. It's worth point three bigs.
There we go. Oh.
He has the nuts.
Got uh the nuts.
Oh.
As he always does.
Still got thirty big lines.
What a, what a jerk.
Spin it back up.
Uh, when the ace pairs, I think this is one where we could probably double bear, double barrel some.
Yeah, I was looking at this one earlier, um, with the ace pairs, we go kind of crazy.
I'm thinking like on the smaller side, if we double barrel here. But it's a check. It's what, it's a check.
Checking. Does it check with like all the under pairs?
What, we're seeing six is check, I would say, yeah.
Pretty much, man. Pretty much.
I could lose.
Are those?
Not all pairs.
Twos and threes are now turning into a bluff.
Yeah.
Cuz twos, twos are gonna lose here unless you bluff it.
Pocka deuce is never.
This is always loses.
We, eh, wait, wait, it went check, check.
Yeah.
Do we have a call here?
No, 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 I don't.
Hey, what do you bluff here?
King X, Jack X.
Why do you need to bluff?
There always has to be bluffs in your range.
Yeah, we'd, we'd raise some buffs.
I think he went too big to pull from combos like this. But um I wouldn't be surprised if small pairs turn into the bluffs here sometimes versus smaller size.
If so, it's mixing in different.
Dear God, solver's such a fish.
Oh, we haven't. No, we.
No, we didn't. Um, this is a pretty attractive barrel, I think. We got three straight, three flush, king high, we get better hands to fold.
And we got a no.
The only lame thing is that we don't actually have a straight draw, but I'm still okay with betting.
But ties, we got a spade.
I kind of want to go, um, I like that eight point format.
Yeah, I thought about, but I wasn't.
You really want those folds here.
Pump it up. The ten on the turn is one of the best that the nine, the ten and the eight is pretty good for us somehow.
Well, not that, that board we looked at was an ace high board where the, where the eight, nine and ten was strong on the.
Well.
I don't know if it's gonna be the same on a nine high board. I think the ten is a good card cuz it changes top pair.
Right, Joey, it's not that.
This is a betting range. Is it possible to see equity, though, instead of uh? Fifty, but like across different, across different cards, like to see what's the equity of an eight, what's the equity of a nine?
Maybe like this.
Or I think it's view, um, next to that, view chart instead of view charts or something.
Chart, table?
I don't know.
It's gives sizings, the fall.
Yeah, these are all giving us our strategy.
Cards.
We have a little bit of hypothesis that he raises a bunch of um his lowest overcards, like um jack ten, queen ten, stuff like that. And so then he's a, doesn't connect with this ten very well when it hits.
The eight and the ace here would be pretty good for us.
Oh, and we get jammed on. Easy, easy game. Okay, jerk.
Snap it off, I put him on a side.
Man, this is an interesting combo. This is an interesting spot, to be honest. Like, I see, I see merit in going pretty, pretty big here.
Big heart, twelve.
Yeah, the worst thing and low ace.
God, what am I doing?
Well, no, but it's not an eight. It's you lost point zero one bigs there. It's fine.
So, yeah.
I mean, distinguishing those two sizings is a little bit of a buying game and it's fine if we're not.
Oh, wow.
He's never gonna fold a queen or a six.
I think we, uh, I think we, yeah, I think we jam.
Nine.
Oh, whatever.
Hold it up there. Look at this.
That's how we play poker.
Uh, we can go pretty big here, pretty big.
Definitely.
I'm a twelve six.
Toast is pretty hot. Toast is pretty hot.
Man, what are we doing? Why are we checking here? I'm just.
Cannot stand the rains. What do you do? You bet here, you race.
Hunting, it's, it's losing two hundredths of a big, it's not.
If he, if he bet twelve and he he shoves, I think you're still getting odds to call.
So what, so what is he calling and jamming here on the turn is the question? Like, it's ace, king. It's not like he's just got the nuts here all the time.
There's no way this is a call, Joey.
You don't think? I I think it's close, man. I think it may be indifferent. It's probably a fold, though.
Yeah, I knew it.
Alright, where where's it drawing the line with flushes, though? Oh, you clicked off of it. I think it's that queen five. I think you're calling the queens.
Jack ten, that's what I thought. Jack ten. You need extra equity, basically. So a pair of five. Pair of five is gonna mix falls. That's a pair, right? What's the board?
I don't know, is it? I don't know, is it?
Oh, yeah, extra equity. Really? A straight draw or the straight draw? The Jack ten or the Jack five, that is gonna call.
Okay.
So a little bit more equity. I'll see, I don't think I called Jack five here. You call Jack five when you bet twelve and he shoves?
I don't think you can fold it, man. Like, I think.
It's mixing, it's mixing. So you can, but like, I'm just not.
I'll put it this way, if you're putting yourself in a position to fold a straight draw and a flush draw with uncompleted equity, just check. Don't ever bet it.
I agree. Let's check. Although, yeah.
Now what?
Turn a backdoor like this, I'm losing it, and then.
I don't know what to do here.
Give up.
Yeah.
I kind of don't want to give up, but I don't know if this.
Four to a street.
I mean, how many seven fives do we have? Do we have enough to consider this a blocker for, to the wheel?
I want to, uh, not agree, maybe I'm wrong.
I, I think you just give it up, man. I don't know.
No, 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 you can, uh, give it up, or you can go.
On the board.
See, I see, I see.
Uh, if we bet this flop, I kind of want to bet this turn for the same heuristics we've kind of looked at all day so far.
Yeah.
Five?
Yeah, five or, five or eight. It may even go bigger. Okay, well, I'm, I'm thoroughly confused now.
I know, this is.
Well, tell you what, as much as we want a double barrel, we have a spade, so the spade makes it so that it reduce our, our sizing and our bet frequency.
Look at the rest of the combos. I don't think that's necessarily true. Across all different runouts.
Alright, so let's look at the Jack nine off without the spade.
It's something, it's just about Jack nine for whatever reason. Like, all the other combos seem to have, like. Well, I guess it's just that it's using that pair as some kind of overriding factor here for whatever reason.
It really doesn't want to pick that nine, but.
No, it doesn't. It doesn't like the nine here. Although, in other situations, it was betting second pair for whatever reason. I wonder if it's because it's a three, and he's gonna have some three X here. Like, it's a better card for his range.
We got to the risk, like, when the flush completed on the turn, we have.
We keep going. Yeah, we keep going, so.
I have, I have it saved. We have that when the blush completes, but not. Great.
Yeah, I think it's just something about the nine X.
Turns are hard, guys. Turns are super hard.
Yeah.
Like, I feel like we, you know, we spend so much time setting flops, and we know them well, and then you get to the turn, you realize you don't know anything.
I don't know what I'm doing here.
Well, I can tell you, I, I know, I know I'm checking too much on the turn. And, um, I, I can tell you, I do know that. So.
I have a suspicion that this is related to, uh, my negative red line. I think, uh, if I find some more, uh, bluff on the turn. I think that's the spot where it happens.
Yeah, I had some private coaching with regards to this, and that was, uh, one of the big topics that we, the overarching topics we kind of discussed was. Um, improving my red line, and it had a mountain of stuff to do with how I was playing turns. I've become way more aggressive on turns than I used to be, and it's still not aggressive enough, apparently.
So, I mean, I showed, I was doing the similar thing earlier today, and I had spots where I needed to be betting, like, eighty-seven percent on turn. And I was like, I, how do I find eighty-seven percent of hands? This is ridiculous.
So this is our turn betting strategy when we don't have spade in our hand. So, all, all the top pairs.
Big cards. I don't know why it's just top pairs, really.
What is this, like, that we use?
Uh, yeah, man, you pick up equity, dude. You pick up equity on some of those. So it's like a two.
I said they exclude spades, but it's only showing clubs. I don't know.
Ace three gets better hands to fold, I guess. So it's like, you get nines and fives to fold. Yeah, pretty interesting one. Okay, so we play check, cool.
We'll check. Hmm, checking in.
Do we bet here, actually?
Yeah, no, the five, yeah, good for him. You should have.
Yeah. Yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking. I was like, the five is good for him. He should have some five X, but he should be, um, taking this opportunity to probe. Uh, so I kind of want to go smallish, maybe.
Yeah, okay, okay, I'm with you, I'm with you, six.
Okay, well, check high, but.
It's in there, it's in there.
Maybe get some cry calls from, like, ace high or something here.
Yeah, pocket, pocket eights with a spade.
Yeah, if he has those, he should be raising those pre.
He calls some nine X new chop, which is not terrible.
Right, yep, that's true. And we just get a fold, which is, okay. Is, uh, the game slowing down, or is it me?
No, it's not showing.
It's broken.
It didn't like that value bet, huh?
Did not like it at all.
Well, I just rivered top boat. Should I go all in?
Well, what did you do on the turn?
Bet.
Probably.
Who goes?
You were the, if you were the aggressor on the turn.
It's pretty good. Top boat is good hand.
Yeah, I mean, if you're gonna get value. Man, I, I'm gonna hate, I would hate to refresh the client for our lovely nine-win streak, but.